Wanna go over your paper?
Yeah, sure. So I've met with most of the municipalities that have recycling programs. I still have a few left, like Sheffield and Pleasant. I haven't been to Pleasant yet, but I've been to most of the other ones. And I have a very good sense of at least what they're doing and what they're dealing with. It's interesting, they... One of the things that I'm gonna have to... I'm gonna talk to Dan Glatz about, I haven't talked to him yet, is the county bought, as far as I know, all the bins with a grant years ago. And apparently Advance has been taking the bins and then replacing them with not-nice bins. Like apparently they had new bins and then they've just been taking them and then the word is is that, you know, we can't keep track of them and all this kind of stuff. So I have to talk to Dan to see what the situation is legitimately. And because I was under the impression going into it that we own the bins. So I'm curious to see what, you know, and it's kind of one of those things too, like everybody kind of has their own view of their ownership of them. So that's kind of a question mark. I did see through going to them how the county, I think, can collaborate with them and perhaps reduce everyone's costs. Because essentially what's happening is you have all of the rural municipalities that are paying Advance to essentially take all of their materials to the transfer station in Pittsfield, I believe, and then transferring it to Buffalo to be sorted. So the cost for Advance to ship all that stuff is pretty excessive. And I think there's a way that perhaps we could get more municipalities recycling and also get more material for our own facility down the road. I've had a conversation with the... We had our first big meeting with the engineering firm last week, it went very well. I've started talking with them about putting together a feasibility study for the center that'll essentially be used for the... To get recruit grant money to finalize our plans as far as what... How it will potentially be set up, what equipment we would need, that kind of thing. To go along with that is the DCD application that we put in. One of the elements of that, which is the... Sorry, I'm just doing extreme unconsciousness. DCD, we put in the application at the end of last... Or maybe it's today, but I thought it was Friday, to do the fiscal review of the county as a part of their early intervention program. One of the elements that we put on our RFP was... There were several elements, but to do a fiscal financial feasibility study for the recycling center based on all the data that we have on what potentially we could get. This would be done in collaboration with our solid waste consultant in order to get as complete a plan of the system as possible. The idea being that it'd be... That it have a long-term sustainability setup and that we try to get as much money out of it and get it run it as leanly... As lean as possible. So a lot of good things going on with that. One of the things that the engineering firm's gonna be doing is surveying the site. My thought was to, you know, get a floor plan of the building, survey the area in order to get as much information as possible. Because some of the things that we talked about potentially doing might require more space. And I'd like to have a surveyed... A surveying map and all of the data related to it so that if we decide to do some landscaping in order to incorporate other elements into the site down the road, that we can do that. Especially if we can partner with the city and some other municipalities to do some other things and expand the operation. I should've wrote down my list before I started talking.
Not to break your chain of thought, but can I ask you a question about... And I know you're just studying feasibility stage and everything else. If this was ago, would the recycling center sort of be under a department of the county somehow? Or is there any chance that maybe this solid waste authority that is post-closure should maybe not be closing and would they become the authority overseeing the recycling center in some way? Would there be any benefit to that?
Probably the way it would work is that the solid waste authority would essentially be in charge of it to some degree. So... And then the officer, whoever the recycling officer would be, would end up being an employee of the county through the solid waste authority.
But the other alternative would be the conservation district?
That would be a possibility too. Neither one... Yeah, we're... That's part of the planning.
We're going with anything right now.
Yeah. That's part of the planning, but that's definitely a consideration because where it ends up, I mean, there are a lot of different... I don't wanna say strengths, but there are considerations in either of those two scenarios. And there's other places the person could go to, like if he wanted to have more direct control of it.
I wasn't sure how much control that you wanted. And the solid waste authority does have its own federal ID number, its own insurance and had its own employees, could again, I guess, if it was not going to fully be dissolved. But I don't know if there's requirements with the grants too, but it's gotta be through the county as opposed to an authority underneath.
Yeah. I think that a lot of that's gonna be, to some degree, ironed out by the consultant. She's the one who's gonna make most of the recommendations based on her understanding of like the regional setup. So like Elk County, for instance, their recycling coordinator is under the solid... Their solid waste authority and then they kind of manage all of the contracts with the various vendors.
Their solid waste authority is still functioning?
Functioning, yeah, absolutely, yeah. They're the ones that I found out that there are multiple landfills in the state of Pennsylvania that have been closed. I don't know... Someone started saying, is kind of stating that, that we had the first.
We had the first.
There's many, there's many apparently. And I don't know where anybody got the idea that, yeah. I don't know where that came from, but I was under the impression, because I made that statement, they're like, "Oh, we got a landfill right over here, we close." You know, and I'm like, "What?" And so they had two landfills that were like side by side and something like that, but they had shut down.
Is ours just because it's on Russian forest land?
No.
It was the first. I thought that was distinct about our country.
It might have been the first. I mean, I... The impression that I got was there are places all over the state that have been shut down. Some of them are covered up by parking lots, some of them, you know. Like, so there's, you know... I don't know, maybe it is the first, but I didn't ask them the date of when it was shut down. They just made it sound like it was, you know... That it was the originator, so...
They were the first to try to close.
I don't know.
Everybody else succeeded and we didn't.
It's out of curiosity. Now, I know to the Ute, theirs benefits their Lions Club.
The Lions Club handles it. They basically manage the whole thing. And that's one of the reasons why they've really remained solvent. They do all the sorting down there before it's separated and they really go above and beyond down there. Which is, you know, that's part of the issue with us too, is trying to set up a system where we sort it and then we have contracts with various brokers to get the best deal for cardboard, plastic, everything. And that's the other thing too, is that every site is taking different stuff. And I haven't been able to figure that out either. That's kind of a tradition, traditional thing like it's just, well, this is the contract we have. And I can't figure out why they're differentiating. But the goal is to get each site to take as much stuff as possible. Like, cause cardboard, for instance, is one of the few things that you can get some decent money on. I don't know what's going on with recycling thing. I can't remember what the other item I was gonna talk about was. Oh, yeah, that's right. The... I think that's all I've got on that issue right now. I talked with Dan, or Dan Glatz was basically after the situation with the park bench, or the bench bit on the bike trail. I asked Dan Glatz to seek out somebody to build benches for it that would be a member of the community. Part of that is because I went and talked to the Career Center. And they have a great program up there, but they're pretty occupied with the Habitat for Humanity House. And I really wanted to get the benches built as soon as possible in order to have them set up down there. And Dan was nice enough to find a Eagle Scout, a Boy Scout that is trying to get his... And I wish I had my notes, but I should have grabbed them. But he's trying to move up to become an Eagle Scout, I believe. And so he's gonna do this as a project, as a community project, as part of his community service. We're meeting with him this week, I'm really excited about this. We're gonna use Act 13 funds in order to buy the materials. They're gonna come up with a design presented to us as a part of an overall plan to put multiple benches along the bike hike trail. And basically, we're gonna offer materials. He'll be coordinating with, you know, other people in the community that do carpentry and other things in order to really, you know, produce a really nice bench. I've given him a bunch of options of stuff that I liked. If anybody has any recommendations, just let me know, I'd be happy to forward them to Dan. And so I think that relatively quickly, we should have more benches on that trail. It'll be artisanal in nature, nice benches for people to sit on. I told... I kinda... I really wanted them to be nice for people so that they could spend some time down there. One of the other things that we're gonna be working on is how we can further develop the trail in order to have more space for people to spend time down by the river down there and enjoy the, you know, enjoy the public space. I think those are my two big ones. All the other stuff, I've gotta go or work on it before I present. I'll come back and put that in my stuff. I just got something. Well, I've been talking to Matt, because obviously we're going to be... Where work's gonna get done on the, or the parking lot. Parking lot needs, really needs work on. He's talked to a couple of different companies that are coming to take a look at it and make recommendations. As a part of the whole signage bit, which it's my intention to get him a... The math based on my notes from our walkthrough to this week, because I wanna get the signs ordered, is to have a discussion about making edits to this side of the building in the form of a walkway that goes
Oh, yeah.
all the way up the side of the building.
Yeah, we had talked about that.
And then essentially making this stretch one-way all the way up. Like, and then having a sign that says "one-way, you can only enter there", keeping those two, enter/exit, and then just making it so that you can only come up this way. Because that's the only way to extend the space so that you literally can have a single vehicle.
Right. The main problem now being that since people can't enter the front of the building, they have to walk awkwardly along the side of the building directly in traffic.
Yes, which is, I think, a liability.
Huge liability, yeah.
And so...
Huge.
Huge. So, yeah, so I figured what we would do is the path would come off of the sidewalk and all the way up. And I figured that what we could do is talk to the engineering firm. The other thing is, is to have, like, we had talked about the post out front of the...
We're... So let me pick up from there. We actually just got done meeting about the P-Corp grant, which is $15,000 for this year to do improvements related to safety of both employees and members of the public. So we came up with a lot of different little projects that we've been talking about. Mainly replacing concrete pads and putting awnings out on various doorways so that the place doesn't build up right at the doorway. It'll get rain covered and whatever when you're trying to get in. And other, lots of little random things. But one of the things that we did put in our tentative $15 grant was to put some sort of chain and post out on that wall. Because it's more than eight inches, so it's a liability that you can't really let people be stepping on without.
Yep.
So we'll hopefully get that approved and we'll have a grant paid for that.
Okay.
Now, as for redoing any of the parking lot, the... We, in wearing our hats as fiduciary agents of the endowment fund, so not a public meeting, approved up to $10,000 last year out of the road fund in order to do just that. And we have spent all of our... Almost none of that, correct?
I think we've touched it.
I think we may have spent $1,000 on fixing some various stuff over at the warehouse.
Oh, okay.
But it wasn't... It may have been $1,300. Point being, we still got a decent chunk there to foot or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause I... What I was thinking is engaging the engineering firm, having them do...
Have them do a parking study.
Yeah, and just basically lump in the stuff that we think we need. Like, we might even do, you know, maybe even talk about the pad down there for the smoking area so you can get everybody away from the entries. Cause that wouldn't... I don't think that would cost too much.
I didn't even think about that. While we're pouring all this concrete for the other things, maybe we're gonna have them both... Putting that smoker pad out there.
Yeah. So do you... Are you okay with me engaging the engineering firm and then just saying we want concrete pad and then... Cause we could...
Well, the concrete pad, yeah, yeah, say that, but I mean, we're getting the stuff quoted for the other concrete pads too, so maybe we'll do that all at once.
The concrete paths, like, out here though, right? Like, are any of them...
Yeah, but there are point concrete over on the outside of the building, they may as well do the side too.
Well, I'm just wondering if they have, what level of work they'd have to do to accommodate the, like, the parking lot being reworked.
Yeah, really, you need that plant done first, so...
Yes.
Totally, go for that.
Okay.
Alright, so that was the first thing on my list. P-Corp, just FYI, basically, that's what we're applying for.
That's what I figured. You had talked about it before, I think.
Yeah, a while ago. But now it's actually due at the end of the month, so...
There you go. Like everything else.
Exactly. Alright. Co-working/business accelerator space update. I am having the Radius Co-Working Space out of Erie come down to visit with us on Wednesday. It'll be me and Jim Decker taking it. The idea would be, in order to get ultimately to the business accelerator that we want to, we need to start by creating a little bit of a co-working community as an initial, you know, project in order to test out the idea of a model, start building a community so that when the incubator/business accelerator is done, we have people to occupy it. And so I'm going to be going to present to the Chamber, hopefully the next board meeting, or next executive board meeting anyway, to chat about the idea of them fielding some of the costs of maybe running a temporary space in order to start that. And again, partnering with the Radius and Erie. That's why I'm having them come down, just to check out the viability of it. And then hopefully create some sort of a partnership so that if you could become a member of the Co-Working Space in Warren, you know, for 30 days out of the month, that if you're up in Erie for something and you need an office space, they'll provide it and vice versa for a couple of days a month. So I've already pitched the idea to a bunch of local entrepreneurs and they all love it, so...
Good.
I mean, just in itself, you could probably save money. If you think about it, you go to Erie and you hunker down at Starbucks or whatever to work, you're gonna spend
Oh, yeah.
20 bucks on coffee over a couple of days. You might as well spend that towards dues to Warren Incubator or Business Co-Working Space. So making progress on that, I also met with our Government Affairs team last week when I was in Harrisburg. And also Deputy Secretary Scott Dunkelberger regarding our Co-Working Business Accelerator project. And everything seems to be going as smoothly as we could conceivably have it. I still need... The next step for this is going to be probably engaging our architect firm to do a feasibility study on a couple of properties, neither of which I'll identify in a public meeting because real estate clauses of the Sunshine Act, but...
I don't think they're missing your apartment, is it?
Yeah, it's a building that I own. So I don't know how we wanna cover that, though. Do we wanna try to ask the Chamber to do it, or should the county try to cover it?
I don't know, I'd roll the dice with the Chamber, see what they say.
See what they say, and if they don't go for it, then...
I mean, we're gonna end up doing a lot of stuff for them over the next year, so...
Yeah. Well, but... At the same time, 100% there you are for.
I think they're the...
Mock trial?
Is it the mock trial?
I didn't watch.
They had a group, they had one group of kids come to this morning. Maybe that's the second group.
Interesting. Anyway, I will... I do need to do a feasibility study, so the money's gonna have to come from somewhere to hire someone to do it.
Yeah.
The other thing, though, is I was thinking, why go through the bidding process and whatever if we could just use our contacts?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Much support.
I know. But if that's the case, then the money has to come from somewhere. And I know that we had spitballed the idea during budget time of setting aside some contingency money for the project, not as defined as saying that specifically, but... Anyway, I'll see what the Chamber says, and if they don't go for it or it makes more sense to run it through the county, then I'll come back at the next work session.
Well, what I would say in the meantime is talk to the engineering firm and ask them what they think it would cost to do the feasibility study and then we can go from there. Cause then, you know, if it doesn't seem like it's gonna be extravagant in order to get the thing done, then, you know, we'll figure something out somewhere.
So that's my Co-Working Business Accelerator update. Everything's going really well, basically, on track. For RRC, we got that furniture from the Erie Career Link. It's all at our county warehouse now. The RRC has come through and selected at least the initial furniture that they want. So hopefully I gotta get an inmate crew up there to start assembling stuff, clean it up, you know, do some touch-up paint and such over the coming couple of weeks. I also had my first meeting with the RRC this morning regarding marketing. I think they've got a great team in place for it. They're pretty insightful, I was impressed, so... Everything on the RRC is going well. I'm not sure if you saw the email from the Chamber about a request for financing, which we'll have to explore another time, I haven't had time to look at it until before this meeting. I wanted to raise a couple of things related to workforce development. First is that the Workforce Development Board put out RFPs for a new provider currently, or operator, currently it's GCAC at Erie. There have been some complaints by residents in Warren County that, you know, GCAC isn't really servicing Warren County very well. So I volunteered to be on the board that is actually, or the subcommittee that's looking at all the RFPs, not the RFP, we're... All the proposals that we've received back in. And ended up getting 600 pages of reading, which has to be done by Monday, so... I know what I'm gonna be doing this weekend, evaluating proposals. But anyway, the other thing was, I had mentioned to Senator Casey, Representative Rafferty, Senator Hutchinson, an idea where Warren might be a pilot program for a block grant related to workforce development. Take the WEO dollars, based on population poverty rate or some sort of formula, give us a pilot program funding in order to work on workforce development. And that could potentially, if it worked well, send shockwaves through the rest of the workforce development world, I guess. Cause currently that money goes to a nine... I think it's a nine-county region in the northwest and is sort of divvied up by population, sort of not. It's...
It seems like it's far too political a process.
It is a very political process, and I think that just kind of came... Well, the other thing is, they're cutting back on what we can use for brick and mortar. And so that's why I've been telling you guys about the idea of moving to a mobile Career Link model, which I fully support, think will actually serve people better in the future. But the other thing is, they still need a space to work out of, even if it isn't fully accessible to the public. My thought was, if you just gave the counties money, we could probably slip them in somewhere. Hire whoever, slip them in within our system, you know, and still do the same kind of service. So it would probably be more efficient if we just ran it. At least that's my hunch, which is, that's why I approached our legislators with the idea of freeing us up with some sort of a pilot program. And my... I know, I throw ideas at our legislators all the time and don't always get traction, but this one seems to be of interest, so I'll keep you updated.
Well, I don't think anybody's really happy with their current setup, so it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be hard, I think, for them to push that in a different direction. Especially since now it's so popular to do block grants and everything else.
Block grants. Alright, upcoming commissioners meeting, we don't have that until next week, so skip that. Department committee updates, I can't think of anything. I didn't make the last department head meeting, so...
They were like, "Are canceled."
They're canceled, so...
Yeah, nobody...
We didn't miss anything.
Yeah. Nobody could make it.
Schedule. Alright, so this week is jammed, I literally don't have a single 15-minute block except if we end this meeting early this entire week, it's gonna be crazy. Couple important highlights, though, Fire School is this weekend. So I'll be up with probably almost every department in the county. We'll have representatives at the Warren County Fire School. There's the Township Supervisors Dinner on Saturday, if you want to.
Yes.
Alright, cool. Me too. What in the world does that say? Oh, VHS. On Friday, I'm gonna be doing a ride along with Human Services. So I'll probably be on most of the day for that. Next week, I'm going down to Harrisburg for a class with the County Commissioners Association. So I may leave Sunday, actually, and be down there Monday, do some meetings, take the class Tuesday and come back. Also a reminder that Warren Gibbs is coming up really fast. Do you have any thoughts on how the county can help promote Warren Gibbs and get people engaged? I mean, you know, I think we posted something on our Facebook page last year. I did a quick video giving a plug for the fire departments, but is there anything more you can think that we could do to help?
I mean, the only, the only thing I can think of is the fence bit. My only issue, putting something on the fence.
Oh, yeah.
Like, getting a banner for the fence. My only thing is, is that with the fence thing, it can get pretty... It could get hairy if everybody wants stuff there.
There's quite a few people that have signed into that this year.
Signed into?
Into the one gives.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, there's a lot of organizations involved in that now, which is great.
Yeah. Yeah, so I...
I mean, we could maybe even just do a quick video talking about if we just even stacked it together really fast.
Yeah, just so everybody wants to see more of my faces.
Probably writes you your face, mine instead.
Apparently, it's more my bald spot than anything else.
Yeah, why is it that the newspaper always takes pictures from, like, Red Pubus?
Did I? Josh, should I tell you about that? I was over here last week, we were at a public meeting and I walked up and introduced myself to this lady. And she's like, um, I said hello on Commissioner Eggleston, and I shook her hand. She goes, "Oh." She goes, "You look so much younger in person." And I go, "Younger than what?" And she goes, "Well, you look much older in the newspaper." And I'm like, "So, so television makes you fatter, newspaper makes you older." Is that how it goes? And I thought about it, I'm like, "Yeah, they've been getting lots of shots in the back of my head lately." I think that's it. But she was like, I was, she's like, "You look so much younger in person." I'm like, "Well, I guess that's a good thing, right?" I mean, rather than like, "Gosh, you look terrible in person." So, yeah. Anyway.
One more scheduling thing, on the 10th, I signed us up to teach a marketing class at the high school to the entrepreneurship end of our marketing classes.
May 10?
Yeah, and whatnot. So at some point, we should get together and think about what we wanna say.
Okay. That sounds good to me.
Probably before the 9th.
It may be.
I'm gonna go ahead and say that it'll probably be the 9th.
Well, I won't, I want to go up there and talk to them anyways.
Yeah, I just gave on, on kind of business management the other day. So anyway, out of that, I just went into it saying, "I'm not gonna talk about starting up undercoating and stuff." Because either Jeff will come back or Jeff and I will come back, we'll do that later, so. That was the next day available that worked for us. All right, general discussion?
Yeah, we're gonna have our meeting in all city on the third and we'll make a determination then if this Veterans Expo is gonna work. Right now, we're having a hard time getting vendors to sign up. So if we don't have enough vendors, as of the third, we will cancel it.
I gotta get you, you asked for the logo, didn't you?
I, Pam already sent it to me, I've already got my shirts ordered.
There you go, there you go.
And just so you know, if anybody wants to order shirts, our logo, there is so much thread in it that you have to have them put on the sleeve because they're too heavy for the-
Chest.
The chest of the shirt.
That doesn't surprise me, a lot of stuff in there. But they figured out a way to do it through embroidery? That's pretty impressive.
Well, yeah, she says she can do it, so we're gonna see. I ordered five shirts, so.
Awesome.
The other day, I was noticing the sheriff's, I got his polo and seal and everything on it. And I was thinking, I might want to buy a couple for myself.
Okay.
Not through Caddyphone, it's just-
Since you discussed the furniture, did you pull something or something earmarked for HR out of that furniture?
Yeah.
Okay.
But let me tell you how much furniture there is. There's literally two and a half fifty-two-foot truckloads of furniture.
I know, I was gonna go up to see if there was a chair that was better.
Yeah, go for it. Just make sure it's, I think, I think they segregated everything so that if the RRC is getting it, it's in a different room.
Yeah, I talked to Matt, I'm certainly not going down there on my own because I don't even know where I'm going, but I talked to Matt about the possibility of trying to find something if it was available.
Sure.
Were you still, you know?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay. Still trying to figure out what's going on with our money for secural schools because we haven't been able to get it into our bank account yet. I think that just totally has to do with the routing and transit changing from First Niagara to Key Bank, but I call people, they call me back and we're not catching anybody at the same time. Finally did get ahold of one person.
We're getting secural schools signed?
It comes to us and we disperse it out.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it should be just under half a million. And the majority of fifty percent of it, of course, goes to the school district and the rest goes to any, any borough or township that has national forest land in it, divided out by acreage. But, I mean, we heard a rumor that the governor sequestered six percent of it, which I don't believe you technically can do. Tried this before a different year and then they ended up giving it back to us later. So I haven't seen the amount yet to know if we're getting all that supposed to come through or how we're gonna do that.
Is he sequestering it and calling in a management fee or something?
I don't know, we don't get any management fee for sending it out.
It's kind of like a little feel situation.
And, and going over that, when I finally did get ahold of someone, apparently we may have a lot of other checks that now that we've hit more than the six-month conversion time from First Niagara to Key Bank, we have a few other accounts that we've got routing and transit, a lot of them being DHS accounts, so I've gotta get ahold of Marion Anno and see if we can head things off before something, you know, where the money just stops showing up. And then the other question I have, and I don't know if the two of you will do this or not, this is sort of a public meeting because the newspaper is here and it was advertised. Can you sign the agreement for the dam patrol, can do dam patrol? It was a proposal that was prepared in advance, you've all looked at the proposal two or three months ago. I wouldn't push for this, except for the fact, the email apparently came in last week when I wasn't here and Ken got it and just put it over here on someone's desk.
Yeah, we talked about it during that meeting and I asked that we, that we make a motion to approve it in advance and then we could sign it in a meeting like this, and we shut that down for some reason.
Well, nobody had seen the agreement at all, I mean-
Let's take a thing I didn't know last year.
This is, okay, no, yeah, this is, this is not the forestry agreement, this is the dam.
Yeah, we know.
And this one, this one is coming through with a little bit more money than last year, so not a lot. And that's my push for trying to get it signed now and get it in. They normally don't start this until Labor, Labor Day, till Memorial Day weekend, but for some reason, they have written this earlier that it's to commence May fourteenth. If we don't get this signed in until by May second, they will revise the contract, possibly take money back out of it and use a Memorial Day weekend start date instead of the fourteenth. I don't know if they're pushed for starting the earlier date, it's just because we've got nice weather and people are up there and they're normally not, or what the reasoning is. But in the past, we've gotten about twelve thousand.
I mean, my thing is, is that it's pretty much a formality, so I have no issue with signing. I mean, we're in a public meeting, that's our goal. The only thing is, is we may want to check with John after the fact.
Well, yeah, I think we may want to. I hope we sign it here and then on, next Wednesday, we'll officially ratify the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, the contract is-
Probably the only person that's gonna complain will be Payton Stigman. His smirk to me is this, "I don't know if I want to sign this."
It's a seventy-page contract, but honestly, the first five pages pertain to actively what we're doing. The rest of this says, yes, we don't want to backtap this to the government, we haven't hired the wrong contractors for different agreements and, you know, it's basically check here, check here, check here. If you've ever been committed, you know, charged with something. None of the rest of this applies, but it goes all along with the contract. Same contract that we had last year. The only thing is, every year it gets updated by any increase in our hourly rates, benefit costs or anything else. I think you read my long email about it, maybe, that explained the difference in the rates between this rate and the rate that we have from other contracts. But this allows all sorts of costs for your vehicle, wear and tear, and move on dry cleaning.
The other thing, I'll just announce, I guess, that I'll sign this and then go actually sign it later. We have a requisition request for a heating and air conditioning unit that's going into one of our nine-one-one backup tower sites. Yeah. I think it was like thirty-five hundred dollars. It was budgeted for kind of next year's capital, it's not capital, but-
And actually, can I have that, I'll scan it and then-
Did you have to scan on this whole thing without signatures?
I don't know.
You do, a email to scan.
Oh, okay, I hadn't looked at it yet. I'm just saying. It's not like this is at the top of my list of things, the, you know, it's a formality.
We can approve this for about forty years.
And the proposal was already reviewed and approved in a public meeting, which is basically, we can tell them our cost in the proposal, then they say, okay, here's how much we'll grant therefore, it'll be this many hours, this many days. Yes.
Oh, I feel way more comfortable with that. If you want to fight, bring it. We only pick fights when we're in here.
That's a good way to do it, I guess. Because you totally reminded me of something I was gonna bring up and I forgot now.
You totally forgot.
Well, just to make sure, play, cam, chuck, 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 very happy if you can sign, we can get it in.
I was gonna talk about the air conditioning situation in jail, but we don't need to, I don't, we can go over that later.
Oh, I, oh, I might as well announce it here, but there was a, there was an air conditioning unit at the nine-one-one center that cools the server rooms that burn up and is completely kaput like last, I don't remember, Thursday or something like that. They needed, I want to say it was twelve hundred dollars in order to replace it. Due to the nature, the fact that you can't have those servers overheating and make our entire nine-one-one center go down, I just ran on the spot, so I just make it happen, so.
Is that-
It's under the emergency clause, I would say.
Is that on with the renovation for the other conditioning?
Yeah, that's a different, different thing.
Okay, did Mark give you one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For the Watson Tower, that's it, though.
Yeah, who else, then, I'll sign that. This was a separate one, I don't even think we've seen it bill yet.
Okay, all right.
But it was one of those things that can't, couldn't wait, so.
We seem to have an air conditioning problem.
We really do. They're all, all of our air conditioning units were built in the late seventies and they're just not lying right now.
I think part of it is all the election officials, there's a lot more hot air.
A lot more hot air. Fair enough. All right, briefly.
But anyway, to go along with Ben's thing, we're, we've talked to John Collins about doing research on getting portable, some portable air conditioning units for the jail after meeting with the engineering firm and then having them take a look at the jail to replace the air conditioning system over there. They found that that's probably gonna take a little bit longer than we'd like and probably mostly due to the bidding process. But to get that set up, and I don't think they can go any longer without some relief over there, especially in the administrative area. I don't believe that any of, there's an, there's a major issue in the rest of the jail than in the administrative area where most of the staff spends their time in between running around. It's, it's, it's pretty bad. So that should probably cool them off in the, in the short term until we get that system completely redone.
Does that extend into the sheriff's office?
Yes, it'll handle the sheriff's office as well. Yeah, the whole first floor, basically. And a lot of that, the portable units that John's looking at do not have an exhaust port, which is one of the, which has been one of the big issues is because none of the windows open up and if they do, you really don't want them open, just as a security issue. So, so the units that John looked at were, have no exhaust system. They, they, you basically have to drain the unit of whatever, you know, waste material that it produces and then that's it, so.
Honestly, just dehumidifiers would probably go a long way in helping them.
Well, that, that'd probably help too, but at least in this case, once they're done with them, we can potentially use them in other areas when we need to as well, so.
All right. Really quickly on some of our other projects. The annex building, there's no real update, except that we're plugging away on some maintenance things. ERP software, no update. We're waiting for, we're waiting for the nine-one-one consortium to make their decision on their system because if they go with the Tyler system, then it would lower the price for us to get it for our ERP here in the county. And they're still in the process and we're staying out of it because we don't want to bias anybody. Population migration, we're gonna have Alyssa from, our quasi-intern or extern from Pitt Bradford come and present at one of our work sessions, probably in late May, early June, would be my guess. And school resource officer is done. The other stuff, we're gonna have the EIP do fiscal code, though. Should we chat about that or should we just wait until the EIP goes through and have them make the recommendation?
Recommendation for developing law?
Yeah. Why don't you and I set a meeting and we'll chat about what we want to do and make that decision then. So this week's jammed. Next week's jammed. The eleventh is wide open, so have like morning on the eleventh.
Okay. And I, Jeff and I talked about the scheduled threshold, I don't know if you were here or not, but, but... There is still a lot of prep work that I have to do to get, get that ready. And I was talking to Pam about the other position that we have with, with Margaret leaving. And it's funny, Jeff laughed, but I feel that I need the full-time position in there.
I won't say no.
There's just, there's just enough things that, that should be offloaded and have it in. And, and I told Pam, I said, keeping up with capital is something, the capitalists, that should easily be rolled into that position because it relates right through with all the purchase orders and regulations going on. It's just something that hasn't been paid attention to for years here and needs to be, so. I don't know, I think maybe getting around to revising the job description, just adding a few more things in and probably post it as soon as we can. I don't anticipate we're gonna have anyone here before Margaret leaves, but...
Yeah, if you work with Pam on it and whatever you feel is necessary to include in it, then-
A very big and all other duties.
Yeah.
You don't need to turn them on your day.
Yeah, and whenever you have it done, just let us know and then we'll post it on Facebook and try to do some promotion on it, to try to get as many resumes as we can. We've had some luck with this these past years. I've been very happy with, with some of the recruitment we've done over the past few months. So hopefully we can, we can find some gold with that as well.
Yep, good. Anything else we could do or?
Yeah, just so you know, we're starting our flag giveout for Memorial Day, so.
Yeah, so AMVets of Sugar Grove, I believe, asked me to come speak. And then there's also one going on here at Courthouse, right?
One here at Courthouse, Tullied has one, Sheffield has one, Youngsville has one.
I'm supposed to go to the one that you went to last year.
Oh, the little one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
You need to tell me where that is.
Oh, that's right, it's out in the middle of nowhere in Eldred Township. Good luck.
Sanford Cemetery?
Uh, what?
Sanford Cemetery?
I think I know where that is.
It's on Sanford Road.
Isn't that, that, this is-
You don't know where it is.
I drove it past it on my way to Panama.
But it's a very pristine cemetery. It's well taken care of.
Oh, it is nice, yeah.
But it's out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, you, I will draw you a map because you're not gonna have cell reception and you're not gonna find it otherwise.
They can't survive.
Like, come on. I used to live out there.
This isn't like a, you know, Survivor or whatever.
Is that senior church up there, I'm not gonna help?
Oh, yeah, you did, okay, right, your dad was pastor there, yeah, 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 yeah.
Is that past, I don't know, if it's down in Eldred, that's, that's-
Yeah, not on my map.
No, I'm taken up by, by Steve Banko's house.
See, this is why I'm gonna draw you a map. That's Formington Township.
I know. I could have flown there, it was the same for whatever.
I came from Spring Creek, obviously, so I was taking a bunch of little dirt backroads to get there. Okay, hearing nothing else, we'll go ahead and close.